Good morning, everyone. Very nice to see you and thank you all for being here today. It is November 7th. This is a continuation of our Budget Committee. I want to welcome you all and big thanks, before we go anywhere, to Council Central staff, each of you, for all your work. Kirsten Arastad, leading that charge. I know that you all worked for the last number of weeks, but then, all weekend long, I happen to know that you were also continuing till midnight on Monday. It's been a glorious opportunity for me, working with you. We still have work to do, but I think that the major work is behind us and I just really want to express my thanks to each of you for all your great effort in this. So, all of you know, for the past several weeks, we have been working on our budget since the mayor sent down her package. Then it was our opportunity to go through and be able to identify what was most important to each of us individually. So, we brought that forward with green sheets last week. What you're going to be hearing today from Eric Sund is he will run through them all to identify what has been funded and whether or not it's been funded 100% as the council members had anticipated, or whether we had to reduce it. And since we started off with something like $200 million worth of requests and we had about $6 million that we could find to spend, we had to make some pretty strategic decisions. So, for my council colleagues, just so you know, you have an opportunity between now and Friday at noon, if there is something that you want to add or modify, bless you, that you have a green sheet into Kirsten and Eric by noon on Friday. That green sheet has to be self-balancing, so we have to find some additional funds. If you want to fund a project, we have to find funds, which may mean cutting something else, in order to fund your recommendation for next, by Friday. That will be included in our work for next Wednesday. Next Wednesday will be the day that we actually vote on the final package. If you have something that you want to add, I really request that you see me ahead of time. The green sheet has to be on Friday. Council Central staff will work on it over the weekend one more time for, to be able to make sure that we've got the funds. Then that will become something that we will all address next Wednesday. It's a thumbs up, thumbs down item for each of the proposed amendments. So, just know that crafting the package to this point has not been easy. We have had to make some strategic decisions, so crafting something with amendments is going to be even more challenging. I just, I want to say right now, I happen to know of two green sheets that are coming, which I support, from Councilmember Juarez's office. So, we'll be working with you today and tomorrow to see what we can do on that. So, thank you, Councilmember Juarez, for bringing those items so strongly to our attention. Okay, so Eric's going to run through these today. I'm going to remind and ask my colleagues, the less said, the better we can move through this.
Whoa.
If you have some specific things that you want to bring up, please do. But we're, this is not an opportunity to debate what we've already been talking about for the last several weeks. So, if it's new and fresh and you need us to know, please raise your hand. I'll keep an eye on you. Otherwise, the whole point about today is for the public to know what is in the balancing package. And again, thanks to all of you for your great work and your suggestions, your recommendations, and also for not bursting into tears when you found out that we weren't able to fund everything. Appreciate that. Councilmember O'Brien, welcome. All right, so, I also want to acknowledge and say thanks to all of you who worked on the education levy, the family and ed levy. Had a spectacular success last night, so congratulations. I think Councilmember Gonzalez, Councilmember Johnson, were leading that, the mayor's office, all who have been involved. That was a big win. There were also some good things that happened and some things that I wished had passed that didn't, or did pass and I wished it hadn't. But, be that as it may. Let's go forward. Eric, would you like to introduce yourself? And we will have public comment at the end of the session.
Thank you, Chair Bagshaw, members of the committee. I am Eric Sund of your Council Central staff. And the main item here, the main event, is the walkthrough of the package, but I have just a few brief comments to kind of set some context for this. So, after the revenue forecast update from last August and the, after the dust had settled from the construction of the mayor's proposed budget for 2019 and 2020, the council was looking at a general fund revenue forecast of about $1.4 billion per year. A little less in 2019, a little over in 2020. When set against the proposed authorization for expenditures in the mayor's budget, that left a projected 2020 unreserved ending fund balance in the general fund of about $400,000. So, that was sort of the starting point on the general fund side, the city's most flexible financial resource.
Would you just repeat that one more time? How much was available?
It was roughly $400,000 of general fund that was available to be programmed by the council at that point. And we did receive a revenue update in October. It's often called the November update, but we got it in very late October this year. And that included a forecast revision for 2018, which reduced general fund revenue expectations for this year by about $700,000, but increased the forecast for 2019 by about $1.6 million and increased the 2020 forecast by about $1.4 million. So, that provided about $2.25 million of additional general fund revenues on net for the remainder of this year and the next two years. Additionally, there was some new resources, forecast improvement for some transportation-related funds, in particular, the school zone camera fund, but also some transportation benefit district funds. So, taking that and some errata into account, that increased the projected ending fund balance to more like $2.6 or $2.7 million general fund, about 2 and 2/3 million. Set against that, though, there were council member proposals for adjustments to the mayor's proposed budget, which equaled about $202 million of general fund expenditures over two years, in the form of the green sheets that we discussed, I believe it was last week, I'm maybe losing track of time a little there. And so, we, working with you, Chair, and also, of course, with other council members, have identified new resources in the form of efficiencies, other cuts, available fund balance in various places, and other mechanisms to increase the available resources by about $16 million general fund. But that is, that is over the two-year period. And that is what is used to be able to include some of the other council priorities that are going to be, I'm going to be walking through shortly. And it produces a balancing, or rather, a balanced balancing package, as the name would suggest, that's desirable thing. The ending 2020 unreserved fund balance expectation is about $88,000. Now, the actual fund balance, the checking account, if you will, would not go as low as that, but that is the, that is the portion that is unencumbered by reserves for costs that we know that are coming. So, with that, I will move on to the table summarizing the...
And I just want to just underscore one more thing, which all of you did for us, and that was to help identify in a very coordinated way where our investments could both be effective and to be more effective than they've been. So, our, one of our priorities was, as we are investing in programs for people who are experiencing homelessness, trying to find more homes and housing for people that are needed, that we do that in a coordinated way within our own departments, but also with the county. And I respect the fact very much, we've also been able to identify funds to support people most at need, whether they are immigrants, whether they are sexual assault survivors. We know what was most important to all of us, and I think that we are indicating that by moving forward in the budget. And for those of you who are in the audience from share, we have also included in this balancing package enough money to keep all 217 beds open throughout 2019 and 2020. That's a big goal for us, and I just want to acknowledge that it took everybody's effort. And thank you, Eric, if you want to get started on our first green sheet.
Absolutely. So, just to orient the viewers to this document, each green sheet has four numeric entries to the right side. They show the 2019 and 2020 net impacts for both the general fund and the combined total of other funds. There are enough other funds that we can't show each individually, so that's the, that's the total of all of them. And in this particular table, an increase in appropriation, which is the legal authority to spend money, shows up as a positive number, whereas a reduction in expenditure authority or, or an increase in revenue notably, will show up as a negative number, which reduces the, the positive number, which is showing how much additional money is being spent. So, these are net figures that take into account, sometimes in an individual green sheet, both an add and a, and a reduction or an offsetting revenue. So, with that said, the first item in the chair's balancing package, green sheet 1-1A2, which authorizes some corrections, technical corrections, in the form of errata to the proposed budget and CIP, as transmitted by the mayor. Green sheet 1-2-A-1 recognizes the 2019 and 2020 components of the revenue forecast update that was delivered last October, last month. I would note that the budget does incorporate the revisions to the 2018 forecast, portion of the forecast, but they just don't show up in these columns. They're in the fund table elsewhere. Statement of Legislative Intent, or SLY, 1-3A2, requests that CBO report on the feasibility of issuing bonds for affordable housing and equitable development initiative projects. Green sheet 1-4-A-1 recommends the passage of Council Bill 119376, which amends the permitted uses of sweetened beverage tax proceeds. This adjusts the portion of the tax that is directed to what are called one-time expenditures in certain areas, and reduces that from 20% allocation to a 10% allocation. Provides additional flexibility to spend on other costs. Statement of Legislative Intent, 1-5-B-1, requests that the city budget office submit recommended legislation that would create a sweetened beverage tax fund and a short-term rental tax fund, and establishing spending guidance. So, this would establish dedicated funds to hold the revenues from those two relatively new revenue sources, to help keep them separate from the general fund. Statement of Legislative Intent, 1-6-A-2, requests that the mayor's office and the Seattle Department of Human Resources provide the Labor Management Leadership Committee a report on the city's contracts for services. Green sheet 1-9-A-1 recommends passage of Council Bill, which has not yet been introduced, but is in our possession, which would suspend for the years 2018, 19, and 20 only, the 20% distribution of red light camera proceeds from the, I'm going to have to look this one up, pardon me. It's the School Safety and Pedestrian Improvement, oh gosh, Fund, I believe. Pardon me there. There is a special fund where those revenues and others are dedicated for spending on transportation safety projects near schools. So, this would redirect that 20% into the general fund for just the three-year period before returning them there. And that is, that's something that can be done without revising the planned transportation expenditures, because there were additional transportation dedicated revenues that came in this year. Green sheet 1-10-B-1 would reduce, or this provides for a reduction across every department that receives general fund funding. It cuts nine, about $900,000 in 2019 and $1.4 million in 2020 of authorized general fund expenditures throughout the city. That is equal to about 0.1% of, of the city's total, total general fund authorized expenditures, which is about a $1.3 or $1.4 billion budget, depending on the, exactly where you measure it. So, these reductions are applied across all departments proportional to the general fund support they receive. And Central staff worked with the mayor's office and the city budget office in evaluating and establishing the size of this cut, and has determined that departments will have the flexibility to allocate this cut as best suits them, so they could take reductions in things like travel or training, professional services, salary savings from vacancies, whatever is most suitable to each individual department. And the Central staff, again, working with CBO and the mayor's office, have determined that this level is absorbable without preventing the delivery of the services and programs and projects that are anticipated in the proposed budget, and in this case, in the chair's balancing package, but that a further reduction would begin to impede that delivery. And that, that concludes all the CBO or City Budget Office designated green sheets and SLYs. If there are any questions, happy to...
Councilmember O'Brien.
Eric, I'm, the sign of the numbers, these are all, well, except for the first one, all negative numbers. Can you, but does it increase general fund or decrease it?
So, in this table, a positive number indicates an increase in the authority to spend. So, if you're adding $200,000 to a program, that means you can, $200,000 more dollars can be spent. That does, on the flip side, mean $200,000 fewer dollars that are available somewhere else. But the adds to the expenditure authority show up as a positive, and I think that may perhaps feel more intuitive than the revenues showing up as negatives, although the cuts, reductions in expenditure authority also show up as negatives. And so, those are all compressed to show a single number indicating the net impact on the ability to spend from the given, either the general fund or total funds, as a result of that, that one green sheet.
Great. So, just looking at the column, 2019 net general fund impact for those first eight items, we essentially reduced a little over $4 million in spending, or some combination of that, or increased funds that were available. So, there's an additional $4 million that we will likely use up as we go through these other items below.
That's correct. And City Budget Office gets to sort of be the vehicle here in our system for developing these green sheets for a number of, a number of places where resources are being identified that, that don't directly tie to one particular department, whether it's like a tax, tax policy revision, or an accounting change, or something of that nature.
Please, there's, I don't see any other questions. Let's go on to Office of Arts and Culture.
In the Office of Arts and Culture, green sheet 2-A, or sorry, 2-1-A-2, increases expenditure authority by $25,000 general fund in 2019 to support racial equity alignment. Green sheet 2-2-A-2 adds $75,000 general fund in each year to the Office of Arts and Culture to support an African-American museum. And green sheet 2-4-A-2, or rather, SLY 24A2, requests that the Office of Arts and Culture, the Department of Neighborhoods, the Department of Parks and Recreation, and the Office of Intergovernmental Relations participate in the creation of a set of principles to review the memorials, plaques, and other artwork on city-owned land that reference, honor, or display Native American culture. And you can see the net impact for the Department of those three items is an increase of $100,000 in 2019 and $75,000 in 2020 of general fund authority.
Bagshaw?
Yes, please. Thank you. I just want to thank you for finding a way to find these, Councilmember Harrell sponsored ads in such a way that you avoided using the admissions tax. As I have mentioned before, I'm interested in using a small allocation of the admissions tax and bringing it forward in the next round to address an emergent need associated with finishing up the town hall project, so the...
So, I'm expecting a green sheet from you about town hall.
Yes, and the fact that you were able to fund Council President Harrell's ads with something other than ad tax is making it more possible for me to bring that forward.
Thank you for bringing that forward. Okay, Office of the City Auditor.
Office of the City Auditor has one item, green sheet 31A3, which adds $253,410 general fund to develop a second-year report on the city's secure scheduling ordinance. In the Seattle Center, Statement of Legislative Intent, or SLY 41A2, requests that Seattle Center pursue opportunities to support additional facility development at the replacement skate park on the campus. Green sheet 42A1 recommends passage of Council Bill 119379, authorizing a Seattle Center interfund loan ordinance. This is to facilitate smoothing over the financing of the operations of the department during the key arena redevelopment. Green sheet 43A1 recommends passage of Council Bill 119382, revising facility fees at Seattle And the final item at Seattle Center is green sheet 44A1, which authorizes passage of Council Bill 119381, authorizing revisions to parking charges at Seattle Center.
All right, the next, next section is Department of Neighborhoods.
Green sheet 91A1 recommends passage of Council Bill 119378, establishing, or rather revising, I believe, Neighborhood Matching Fund Guidelines. Green sheet 92A2 adds $138,000 general fund in 2019 and $139,000 general fund in 2020, as well as providing authority for a strategic advisor position in the department to coordinate the Seattle's response, or the city's response to the 2020 census. Green sheet 93C1 appropriates $250,000 general fund in 2019 to support historic preservation seed funding. And green sheet 96A2 adds $116,000 roughly in 2019 and $117,000 in 2020, both general fund, and provides position authority for a planning and development specialist to support the Your Voice, Your Choice program.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation is next.
Green sheet 101B1 adds authority for three part-time positions in 2019 to continue increased operating hours at the Magnuson Park Community Center. 102C1 adds $150,000 in 2020 in the Department of Parks and Recreation to fund the operation of seven additional wading pools and increased wading pool operations daily, generally. Green sheet 103A2 adds $40,000 in 2019 and $40,000 in 2020 to extend operation of Coleman Pool for an additional four weeks per year. Green sheet 107B1 adds $470,000 of King County levying, levy funding appropriations in 2019 to support the Yessler Crescent Improvements Project, and imposes a proviso on that funding.
Thank you.
Green sheet 108A1 amends the CIP project for Lake City Community Center project and Community Center Rehabilitation and Development Project. It's two capital projects up in Lake City. Establishes, that those amendments establish some funding designations for future years outside 2020. Green sheet 109A1 amends the CIP project for the South Park Campus Improvements Project. Green sheet 1010A1 recommends passage of Council Bill 119383, the ordinance revising Parks Department fees. Green sheet 1011A1 recommends passage of Council Bill 119375, which authorizes an amendment to the interlocal agreement between the City of Seattle and the Seattle Park District regarding the interest earnings from Park District funds and allowing those to be retained in the general fund. Parks Fund, sorry.
Yeah, Parks Department.
Yeah, that was overreach, I admit. Green sheet 1013B1 appropriates $150,000 of King County levy funding in the Department of Parks and Recreation for a performance evaluation of capital planning and development. And green sheet 1014A1 amends the CIP project page for the Magnuson Park Athletic Field 12 Conversion Project to accelerate it by two years. Continuing at Department of Parks and Recreation, green sheet 1016-A1 amends the CIP project page for the Department of Parks and Recreation's Green Lake Community Center and Evans Pool Replacement Project. Green sheet 1017A1 appropriate $70,000 of King County levy funding in 2019 and 2020 to fund activation projects and programming at City Hall Park. Green shitty, sorry, green sheet 1018A1 appropriates $130,000, apologize for that, of Park District funding in 2019 and 2020 to fund Park Ambassadors at the Ballard Commons Park. Green sheet 1019A1 cuts $70,000 of general fund preparations in 2019 in Department of Parks and Recreation by eliminating funds provided for the purchase of a new vehicle for bathroom maintenance. So, that's freeing up some resources. And green sheet 1020B1, rather SLY, 1020B1, requests an evaluation of opportunities for the installation of new lighting along 67th Avenue Northeast near Magnuson Park.
Question, Councilmember O'Brien.
Eric, there's a number of these items that appear to be ads and read like ads, but there's no dollar changes. So, let's just take the very first one, where it says add three part-time positions for the continuing, or increase operating hours at Magnuson Park Community Center. Walk me through how we, how we add those positions, or if that's not a good example of others, but there's no, we don't show any dollar amount. Are we just absorbing more fund balance or something?
I'll defer.
Tracy Rassell, Council Central staff. That's exactly what we have done. Couple of different fund balances. The first one is, so in the transition that we did, the swaps we did between REED and MPD funds, there was a small amount that we did not program, and so that became available to actually fund those three part-time positions to the tune of about $130,000 for that first one. And then I think the next one is the, it's not the, let's see, it's the...
Two.
10, which one? Nope, it's not 382. Nope, Coleman Pool is self-balancing. It's down the way, I think, actually. It's either, it's either self-balancing or we have used fund balance, I know what it is. It's the Ballard ambassadors. So, remember, we are paying off our interfund loan that we made. We saved about $130,000 a year for the next few years, because we paid that interfund loan off early, and so we have captured those savings to pay for the ambassadors, to the tune of about $140,000 a year.
Great. So, on number, the third one there, number 23, the Coleman Pool, you said that's self-balancing. Can you explain what self-balancing means?
I can't. So, the pool is anticipated to open for another four weeks, and there are going to be fees that people pay to go to the pool during that time, and we think it's going to just about match the cost of opening the pools.
Great.
Thank you, very clear.
In the Department of Finance and Administrative Services, green sheet 12-1-A-2 adds $107,000 general fund in 2019 and $139,000 in 2020, as well as authority for one strategic advisor one position to support the priority hire contract compliance. Statement of Legislative Intent, 123A1, requests that FAS submit a report on mutually offsetting benefit leases that the city has. Green sheet 12-4-A-1 recommends amendment and passage of Council Bill 119385 related to fees at the Seattle Animal Shelter, and provides expenditure authority of $157,000 per year, general fund, to support an animal control officer to, the said position also being authorized. Green sheet 125B1 appropriates $100,000 general fund in 2019 to begin modifications required for a childcare center on or near the city campus here, and creates a new CIP project. Statement of Legislative Intent, 126A1, requests that FAS submit a business plan for the operation of a municipal bank. Green sheet 128A1 recommends passage of Council Bill 119384, which raises regulatory fees administered by FAS. Green sheet 1210A1 reduces appropriations at FAS by $208,000 general fund in 2019 and amends a capital project, and I believe this is for the purchase of software to help administer the animal shelter.
You're getting head nods behind you.
I should have worn my mirror sunglasses. So, that was 1210A1. Green sheet 1220A2 recommends passage, as amended of Resolution 31847, which revises judgment and claim fund policies. Number of revisions there, including funding policies. The amendment adds a council representative to the, to the, basically the panel that would help oversee these policies. Green sheet 1221A2 appropriates $220,000 of general fund to FAS to fund... Green Sheet 1221A2 appropriates $220,000 a general fund to FAS to fund civil attorneys to work with King County’s Department of Public Defenders or Public Defenses in their representation of Seattle Municipal Court indigent defendants, civil aid. Green Sheet 1222A2 reduces appropriations in FAS’s jail services section and adds $59,000 and changed in general fund in 2019 and a little over $60,000 general fund in 2020 to support a half-time strategic advisor one position in the Office of Civil Rights. Additionally requests termination of the city’s Snohomish County Jail Services contract. So this would redirect funds that are appropriated to pay for that jail services contract and sends them to the Office of Civil Rights. Statement of Legislative Intent 1270A2 requests that the City Budget Office submit a report on the City of Seattle’s jail services contract with King County as opposed to Snohomish County. So that’s a look at the utilization and costs related to that contract. That’s the end for FAS.
Great, thank you. And just as a footnote, and we’ll be talking more about it in various other litany’s here, but I want to acknowledge and thank Councilmember Gonzalez. She’s going to be coordinating this whole effort in reviewing the criminal justice expenditures, what we’re doing, what the outcomes are, and for 2020, if there’s changes that we want to be making, not so much in the budget, but in our approach. So we’ll be hearing a whole lot more about that. But as we’re going through and seeing that certain monies are going into some of these projects, we’re really trying to get a coordinated system to know, are our investments working? And we’ll have a report back to others on this council sometime in 2019, fairly early, so we can make some decisions about 2020. Thank you. So let’s continue onto the next category, which takes us to Human Services Department.
Green Sheet 132A2 reduces the, actually, this is in Finance General, but it’s a reserve that holds funds for a variety of purposes in departments. And this reduces $115,000 of general fund appropriation in each, in the first year, rather, and $120,000 in 2020 that would be supporting certain costs in the Seattle Fire Department’s budget. Green Sheet 134B1 appropriates $100,000 general fund to establish a reserve in Finance General to support a potential Central Area Community Preservation and Development Authority. That would be held in reserve pending the creation of that authority. And Green Sheet 1340A3 adds $475,000 of general fund appropriation authority to a Finance General Reserve, which would be held to support the development of a mobile integrated health response team in the Seattle Fire Department.
Great, thank you very much. As all of you know, that’s been my top priority. I want to take one step back because some of my council colleagues would not have heard about 134B1. It is a green sheet that was created by Council President Harrell with thanks to Representative Sharon Tomico-Santos and Speaker Frank Chop. So there is an opportunity with state funds to look at the SVI building and create a new program for apprenticeship and other work there in the Central District. So that money will not be spent until the state money is authorized, which we will not expect until probably the end of June.
So the Human Services Department green sheets are broken into two sections, the first of which I’ll be speaking of momentarily, covers programs and other expenditures authorized for purposes that are at least not primarily services for those experiencing homelessness. The second section will combine appropriations and other budget actions related to services for those experiencing homelessness in both HSD and in other departments. So in the Other Services category of the Human Services Department, Green Sheet 141B1 appropriates $100,000 in 2019 for a community health engagement location and imposes a proviso on that funding. Statement of Legislative Intent 142A2 requests that the Office of the Mayor submit a report on a fixed mobile community health engagement location site. So some site selection recommendations for that particular program concept. Green Sheet 143B1 appropriates $500,000 general fund in 2019 and $500,000 again in 2020 for Human Services Department to support substance use disorder treatment. Green Sheet 144B1 appropriates $100,000 general fund in 2019 to support capital costs for a public health clinic remodel. Green Sheet 145B1 appropriates $215,000 general fund in 2019 and $403,000 general fund in 2020 to support a first responder triage program. 148B1 appropriates $519,500 backed by sweetened beverage tax in 2019 and $700,000 of general fund backed by the sweetened beverage tax in 2020 to support food banks. And also, it reduces appropriations for media campaigns in 2019 to offset those first, some of those first-year costs and imposes a proviso on the funding related to food bank support. Green Sheet 149B1 appropriates $423,673 general fund in 2019 and $666,411 general fund in 2020 to provide increased financial support for contract inflation amounts and directs that those be prioritized for wage increases and requests a report. I believe this authorizes two and an additional half percent inflation on these service contracts above the mayor’s proposal for a 2% increase related to, and then again directs that that priority be given to use those funds for provider wages.
Great. Councilmember Muscata has something to say.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to express my appreciation for you as the chair in this council for continuing to express the desire to make sure that we’re investing in human service provider wages. I really appreciate this initial investment. I just want to flag for folks that we’ll continue to do some work with central staff and all of you to see if there is any additional funding that could help us expand the human service provider inflationary need to all contracts up for next year. That’s one big priority issue area I’ll be looking into between now and the next time around. And just really appreciate the work that you all have put into this. And we’ll continue to do some digging and we’ll get back to you with some language soon.
Councilmember O’Brian.
Thanks. I’ll second what Councilmember Muscata said. This is a high priority for me, too, and I really appreciate Chair Bagashaw’s work to get this funding in there. And we know this is a long-term piece of work we’re going to continue to keep working on. And Councilmember Muscata, I’d love to work with you in the next few days to see if there’s a little more we can do this year, too. If I could go back to the previous item, too, since we’re jumping in here. On the cuts to the media campaign in 2019 for the sugared beverage tax, I’m curious if we, if anyone had reached out to the Community Advisory Board and got their feedback on that?
I have not touched directly with the Community Advisory Board, but my understanding is that their initial plans on how to actually implement that, both of those campaigns, it’s actually two separate pieces, was to go through the King County Department and Seattle Department of Public Health, and that their ability to do that and implement those contracts was not coming to fruition at this point. And so they were either going to have to look at a different action or potentially putting those activities off for a while.
Okay.
What would you like to do about that?
Well, why don’t I reach out to that advisory board? I just want to make sure that we continue to honor their leadership, not that we have to agree with them on anything, but I think we should at minimum make sure we’re getting feedback from them as we’re touching that. So I will reach out to them now and see, get their take on that, too.
Jeff, can you explain a little bit, what was the relationship with the Public Health Board? Was there an issue there that it wasn’t getting to the right people or what it, maybe I just misunderstood what you just said.
I don’t have that level of familiarity, but the, these are going to be two counter-marketing or public media campaigns, one that would have a youth-led focus and then one that’s more general in scope. And both of those would have worked through the Public Health Department in order to, they were going to utilize their existing mechanisms in order to do that campaign, and they were finding that it was not going to be feasible for them to do so at this time. I don’t know the specifics about why it wouldn’t work, but that was feedback that we had received already, that they were having to look at a new approach or different options in order to actually be able to do them.
Okay. Well, I’m unclear about what’s gone on behind the scenes there. So Councilmember O’Brian, if you want to work with Councilmember Warris, Councilmember Muscata and I, and me, on that, I’m happy to do it because we all sit on the Board of Public Health and maybe we can help move that through. Councilmember Warris has something to add.
I’ll be brief. Are we talking about the Opportunity Fund? No, we’re not talking about the Opportunity Access Fund.
No, that had been, that was something that had been proposed in earlier drafts of this policy proposal. Rather than taking action that would affect the Food Access Opportunity Fund, instead, because it was both a lower priority and also because there was going to be an inability to do those, at least initially, those two campaigns, instead the switch was made in the chair’s package to take a cut to those programs.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Eric.
Item, Green Sheet 143A2 appropriates $180,000 a general fund in each of the two years.
Pardon me, is it, I see 31413A2 in our book? Is that different than what you’re reading here?
I may have misspoken, I apologize for that. It’s 14, Green Sheet 1413A2, $180,000 in 2019 and $180,000 in 2020, both general fund to support services for LGBTQ seniors. Green Sheet 1416A2 appropriates $150,000 per year general fund to provide legal services for sexual assault survivors. Green Sheet 1417B1 appropriates $37,539 backed by sweetened beverage tax in 2020 to increase food delivery capacity. Green Sheet 1419A1 reduces general fund expenditure authority by $67,000 in 2019. This would reflect the, an executive, salary savings associated with an Executive III salary position, and I believe this reflects the assumption of hiring in April rather than January. I’m sorry, that’s a, six months into the year rather than at the beginning of the year in 2019. Green Sheet 1420A1 reduces expenditure authority by almost $99,000 general fund in 2019, and that is related to, again, hiring delays for three positions, adjusting the assumption for salary for those just in the first year, under the assumption that they will not, in fact, be working in those positions on the first of the year. Green Sheet 1495-A4 imposes a proviso on navigation team appropriations in the Human Services Department. Green Sheet 1497-A2 appropriates $44,000 general fund in each year for the Human Services Department to support contracted mental health professionals on the navigation team.
Great. Can I just ask a quick question on the 1495A4? And Councilmember Herbold, I believe that you and the Executive’s Office have reached an agreement about this proviso and the language in it, and I’ve talked with the auditor as well, so we’ll continue as this report comes forward to make sure that all of us know what the actions are that are being taken. And I just want to make sure that I’m clear with you that that is the case.
It is the case. Thank you for helping to facilitate those discussions.
And I’m also really appreciative of those who are working on the navigation teams so that they know they have our support, and we’re really trying to make a difference for people who are suffering homelessness and get the services to them that they need. Thank you. Hey, congratulations. All right. Just a quick hello and thank you to Councilmember Gonzalez, Councilmember Johnson. I can only imagine that you were appreciating with the mayor and with others, the good work that has been done on the family and Ed Levy. Thank you, and thank you for your leadership on that. And we are going through the various provisos. There, what Eric is doing at this point is identifying what is in the balancing package, and unless there is a specific question, he’s just reading into the record what has been identified so far.
And on that Green Sheet 1495-A4 imposing the proviso that you were just mentioning, so that basically breaks the navigation team funding into quarterly amounts and requires quarterly reports in order to release the subsequent amounts. So that brings us to Statement of Legislative Intent 1498-A1, which requests that the Human Services Department send weekly reports on monitoring the status of the encampments. And the final item in this section is Green Sheet 1499A3, which adds $462,000 in 2019 of general fund expenditure authority and $750,000 in 2020 to support expansion of the Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion Program.
Did you have a comment? I just saw Councilmember Herbold leaning forward. Were you?
I was poking my head forward to see whether or not the sponsor of that item had a comment. But I think there are some continued discussions we have to have about making sure that our intentions for the funding for the expansion of this program actually are based in sort of reasonable expectations about what they can do with those sources of funds. I think we all have sort of different ideas, both as far as a geographic expansion into south and southwest districts, as well as a deepening commitment and deepening engagement in areas where LEED is already active. And whether or not we’re going to be able to accomplish all of that, I think we really need to talk to some of the folks on the ground who are deeply engaged in this work.
Good.
Thank you, Councilmember Herbold. And Councilmember Bagashaw, thank you so much for having this piece in the budget. Following up on what Councilmember Herbold said, I will reach out to folks running LEED. We had originally proposed adding $1 million each year based on scope, and I just want to understand as we prorate it what that means. The intent here is pretty clear, and I just want to make sure that’s going to play out, as Councilmember Herbold said. So I’ll be sure to share with others what I learned.
Thank you.
In the next category, which is, covers budget actions related to services for those experiencing homelessness, the first item is Green Sheet 15-1-A2, which appropriates $79,000 general fund in 2019 to support mental health outreach services. Green Sheet 152A2 appropriates $55,000 a general fund in each year to support homelessness outreach programming. Green Sheet 15-3A2 imposes a proviso on the Human Services Department budget regarding homelessness outreach in certain neighborhoods by the Metropolitan Improvement District, or MID. Green Sheet 156A2 appropriates $100,000 general fund in each year for homelessness day center operations. Green Sheet 1517, or rather, 157B1 appropriates $275,000 general fund in 2019 and $300,000 general fund in 2020 to support homelessness prevention services. Green Sheet 15-8A2 appropriates $378,000 general fund in 2019 and $756,000 general fund in 2020 to support basic shelter provision. Statement of Legislative Intent 15-9A1 requests that the Human Services Department submit a report on request for proposal design for eviction prevention rental subsidy programs. Green Sheet 15-12A2 adds 400, or rather, $44,400 of general fund in each year to support the provision of handwashing stations in the city. Green Sheet 15-13B1 appropriates $140,000 general fund in each year for the Human Services Department to support a health and environmental Department to support a health and environmental investigator position.
Just very briefly, Madam Chair.
Did you want to speak to that?
Yes, just very briefly. I think that this green sheet, in addition to the one that was just described around the hand washing stations, are so critical for public health. I think we're making some really much-needed investments in our public health system and have heard a huge amount of appreciation from the public health community about these two, so just wanted to flag that and say thanks.
Good, thank you.
So.
15-15?
Thank you very much. Green sheet 15-15 reduces general fund appropriation by a little less than $100,000 and other fund appropriations by about $29,000 in 2019, and reduces the general fund appropriation by about $44,000, as well as $1,400 in other funds in 2020 in Seattle Public Utilities, and eliminates a 1 FTE executive two position and adds in its place a 1 FTE manager three position. So that's re-categorizing that as a lower-cost position. Statement of Legislative Intent 15-17-A2 requests that the Human Services Department provide guidelines for homelessness service provision to the LGBTQ community. And Statement of Legislative Intent 15-18-B1 requests that the mayor's office create a client group with the council regarding the consideration and implementation of homelessness governance recommendations. I believe that's governance for homelessness services.
Good. And it's, it's a regional effort, not just city, but it's coordinating city expenditures and investments with King County as well.
In the Office of the City Attorney, green sheet 18-1-A1 reduces the general fund appropriation by $27,479 in the first year only, and that is adjusting a vacant position to assume that it will be filled on April 1st rather than January 1st of next year, just captures some of those savings. In the Legislative Department, green sheet 19-1-A2 appropriates almost $166,000 general fund and authorizes two term-limited positions, and offsets that with a $166,000 reduction in the Seattle Municipal Court, and makes a similar adjustment at the $214,526 level in 2020 that would support the development of a criminal legal system realignment plan. Office of Civil Rights has three items. Green sheet 21-1-B1 appropriates $12,000 a general fund in each year to the Office of Civil Rights to help provide funding for the Indigenous Peoples' Day celebrations, and imposes a proviso on that funding. Green sheet 21-5-A1 appropriates $61,000 a general fund in 2019, authorizes a position in 2019, and appropriates $139,000 general fund in 2020, and this basically is making permanent an equitable funding position that already exists on a temporary basis. Green sheet 29-9-B1 appropriates $1,080,000 general fund in 2020 for the Office of Civil Rights for community-based organizations providing alternatives to or addressing harm created by the criminal justice system.
Chair.
Yes, please.
Thank you. I would be interested to know just a little bit more on 21-9-B1, what the vision is for the dispersal of, of those funds. I see that they're not anticipated to be dispersed until 2020, and we had heard from the proponents of funding for these types of services, an interest in working with the city in determining among a number of different programs what's sort of what the priorities are for a limited source of funds, and just would be interested to know a little bit more about what, what we're thinking moving forward.
So this is our Budget for Justice investment. Asha, would you like to give a first response to Councilmember Herbold's question, and I can add to it?
Sure. Asha Venkataraman, Council Central Staff. In addition to the piece around resources in 2019 versus 2020, we had also thought through the fact that we're creating this whole criminal legal system alignment piece, and so at least a year's worth of work could get done before we decide how to equitably fund community-based organizations that are creating the alternatives to the, to the criminal legal system.
Okay. And I also want to say that this is part and parcel of the work that Councilmember Gonzalez is going to be doing in her committee, so that we have a real sense of what our investments are going toward and what the results are going to be. And in your lexicon, the theory of change is if we're trying to solve some problems, what does, what it is and how it is that we're going to make the investments to actually solve them. So I want to acknowledge the fact that all of the folks that came forward with the Budget for Justice investment ideas, I think, have excellent ideas. I just want to make sure that it's coordinated in such a way that it's effective. Please, Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you. And then I, I just want to add to that, that I, my understanding is that, that even though your, your revised balancing package includes this funding in 2020, there are efforts being conducted by our Human Services Department around youth violence prevention, for example, that will, that will, if my memory serves me correctly, will, those will be funds that will be dispersed in 2019 under an HSD RFP process. Is that accurate?
Yes, I believe the RFP is supposed to go out in 2019 for contracts in 2020.
Also for contracts in 2020?
Yes.
Okay.
So there are investments now in 2019 where we're spending money in these, in these categories?
Is there somebody from Central Staff who's familiar with the HSD youth violence portfolio?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
So what I am asking is, it's my understanding that HSD has an RFP process that is designed to, to contract out additional resources in 2019 in the space of, you know, harm reduction proposals that, that sort of help resource the same types of community-based organizations that are represented in the 21-9-B1 construct. So I'm just trying to get some recollection or clarity around what that HSD process is going to be.
Sure. So HSD at this time is still doing its co-design process and plans to release the RFP in 2019, but funding would not begin until 2020. So January 1, 2020 is when those projects would begin, and it is working to combine a lot of their investments that range from youth violence investments and including some that serve adults as well.
And so that's, that's sort of new money or bidding out additional resources. Are there going to be existing contracts that are, that are funded by the city in this space in 2019? We fund this work currently, don't we?
We do currently, yes, sir.
And those contracts are ending.
All these contacts, those, the majority of contracts that are currently funded, many of them have been for several years, and we combine under a single RFP to have a more comprehensive vision.
But there is funding for existing portfolio of work through the end of 2019?
Yes.
And do we, do we know, I know that, I think Councilmember Herbold asked this question last time we were together, is trying to get some clarity around how much we are currently funding as a city in that space. Were we able to identify a dollar amount?
I did email out a dollar amount. I believe, if I recall correctly, it was in the $4 million range, but I'll, I'll recirculate the email and double-check the number. I don't remember it off the top of my head.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Musqueta?
I just want to express another note of appreciation. I think that as we've heard from people testify from the Budget for Justice, this was a shared priority, and appreciate that you and the team have creatively identified ways to make sure that the funding is available and that we're expanding, as Councilmember Gonzalez said, our commitments to making sure that we're looking at a restorative justice model. So thanks for your creative effort to get this in.
Great. I just received an email from Meg Oberding and the Human Services Department that says we do have a base budget for prevention and youth violence in 2019, but unfortunately, she didn't give me a number. So, Meg, if you're listening, please send the number. Okay, please, Councilmember O'Brien.
I, I think this discussion, well, first I want to support what some others have said, and I think this is really important work to be investing in and building on an existing set of investments and continue to look both at what are the investments we make and what are the systems that are in place that are helping and in some cases perhaps doing some harm. And coordinating all those efforts, I think, is, is complex, but it's critical if we want to be successful and be as effective as possible. Councilmember Herbold, your question about how this goes out is a question I share about what goes forward. I'll share with others my kind of high-level sense of how I hope it plays out. There's been ongoing work about a resolution that would lay out kind of a plan for how we want to proceed in evaluating both what are the systems that are in place currently and what are doing good and what are doing harm and how we understand that, and also, I believe, looking at what are the investments we make and how are those coordinated. And so my hope is that resolution will be ready to share soon. I think a number of folks have had a chance to provide some feedback on that. We have this pool of money that is available in 2019, sorry, 2020. We obviously also have existing funds that will continue to be funding some programs. I don't believe we've gotten to it yet, but there's, I believe, in the mix of proposals, an additional position for the Legislative Department to be doing this work, and there are some resources in the Office of Civil Rights to be doing this work. And so my hope is that between all those pieces, that we will jump in hopefully immediately to start, you know, defining a work plan and kind of timeline, and we will hopefully come out with a mix of maybe changes to existing systems, investments we're making, and additional investment funds. And as this budget shows, those additional investment funds will come in 2020. I would hope actually that, that the work can proceed on a swift path and that we might be talking about looking at some, accelerating some of those investments from 2020 to 2019, assuming that we're, we've done the work and feel like there's, we have clarity about where it's going and we have clarity that we're getting good returns on those investments.
Exactly. Councilmember Gonzalez?
I completely agree and appreciate it. I think this is a reasonable approach, and, you know, I think if we had more resources, we'd probably, this would look a little, look a little different, but unfortunately, this is where we're at. And I would say that I appreciate the strategy of enticing us with some 2020 money so that in 2019, we are all working in the direction of making sure that we can get those resources into community as quickly as we possibly can, and I think it'll be, it's an important sort of marker for us to motivate us all to continue to do the hard work in 2019 to be able to release the funds to communities. So appreciate it.
Yeah, you bet. And I think that if we do this as we're all anticipating, excuse me, maybe we can be ready to go so that we can actually release the money on January 1st, not going through another cycle and round of 90 more days of study and plan, but that we're ready to go. Good, thank you. Okay, let's move on. Thank you.
In the Office of Economic Development, green sheet 22-1-B1 establishes a proviso on $185,000 in the Office of Economic Development on the, for the Transgender Economic Empowerment Program. Green sheet 22-2-A2 appropriates $100,000, sorry, $110,000 general fund in 2019 and $60,000 in 2020 to support a legacy business designation program. And green sheet 22-4-A1 reduces the general fund appropriation for OED by $312,000 per year. There are four items in there. It's, it's contracts with the Greater Seattle Partners, Life Science Washington, Washington State China Relations Council, and also a vacant deputy director position. In the new proposed Office of the Employee Ombud, green sheet 23-1-B1 reduces the 2019 appropriation that's been proposed by a little short of $54,000 general fund, again, only in 2019, and establishes a proviso. The proviso basically prohibits the expenditure of funds in this area until the council has passed legislation creating the department. It does provide exemptions for certain setup and planning activities, and the expenditure reduction is based on the idea that the entire department won't be fully staffed and operational right away.
So I have an answer from Meg Oberding about how much money we have in the budget for 2019, Councilmember Gonzalez, Councilmember Herbold. It's 6.5 million total budget for safety, which includes youth violence prevention, and it does include a contract inflator and admin costs, and it's currently slated for 6.6 total budget in 2020.
In the Office of Housing, Statement of Legislative Intent 24-3-A1 requests recommendations from the Office for the expansion of the Home Repair Loan Program. Green sheet 24-4-B1 appropriates $20,000 in each year, supported by use of fund balance to support outreach and engagement efforts for low-income, underserved communities. And green sheet 24-6-B1 appropriates $200,000 general fund in each year to support the Home and Hope Program.
Just a quick one on that. The Home and Hope Program will be funded for both years, 2019, $200,000, $200,000 in 2020. I just promised Speaker Chop we would get back to him with those dollar amounts, so I appreciate that being included.
The Office of Immigrant and Refugee Affairs, green sheet 27-1-A2 appropriates $205,000 general fund in 2019 and $190,000 general fund in 2020 to support the Legal Defense Network.
I'll just say, if I may, please. Chair, I just want to thank all of the, I want to thank the chair, and I want to thank Central Staff, and I want to thank my colleagues for unanimously supporting this increase to make sure that our Legal Defense Network is held harmless in the world of budget cuts here, and that we are able to fund this at the full $1 million for the next two years brings me a lot of joy. So I, I really appreciate this being included.
Great. I think that you had warned me that you were going to die on the tracks if we didn't fund a couple of these things.
I did. I was, I was going to burn it down.
So we, we took you seriously.
In the Office of Planning and Community Development, green sheet 29-2-B1 adds $1 million appropriation from community development block grant funds to the department and establishes a proviso to, to provide a total of $5.43 million for equitable, equitable development initiative grants, and moves $100,000, or rather, $1 million a general fund between Human Services Department sections, and reduces the CDBG support for HSD by $1 million. So this is, this is rearranging some, some available funds from CDBG to support the EDI Grant Program. In the Office of Sustainability and Environment, green sheet 30-1-A1 appropriates $50,000 general fund in 2019 and $117,000 in 2020 for a full-time Equity and Environment Initiative Program Coordinator position. Green sheet 30-2-B1 appropriates $100,000 general fund in each year to fund a Green Pathways Fellowship Program for community-based organizations. Green sheet 30-3-A1 appropriates $158,611 general fund in 2019 for OSCE to pay for a Beacon Hill Air and Noise Pollution Study. And green sheet 30-4-A1 reduces, Office of Sustainability, sorry, OSCE appropriations by $150,000 general fund in each year. In Seattle City Light, green sheet 32-1-A1 recommends the amendment and passage as amended of Council Bill 119349, which establishes the rates for the use and sale of electricity supplied by the department. Green sheet 32-2-A1 recommends passage of Council Bill 119394, which authorizes City Light to issue bonds to support its capital program. And Statement of Legislative Intent 32-3-A2 requests that Seattle City Light submit a monthly report about power outages in its service network. monthly report about power outages in its service network. In the Seattle Department of Construction and Inspections, Green Sheet 33-1B1 establishes a proviso on $85,000 of expenditure authority related to code development staffing on council-identified priorities. So this is directing prioritization of priorities established by the council. Green Sheet 33-2A2 appropriates $403,000 and authorizes five FTE positions and SDCI to restore positions, to improve permit review times and performance, and requests quarterly reporting on performance metrics. This is, these are basically fee-supported positions, and so that's why you don't see net impact in any of the columns there. Green Sheet 33-3A1 appropriates $101,000 in 2019 and $136,000 in 2020 and authorizes a full-time Senior Environmental Analyst position to enhance staffing for tree reviews. Green Sheet 33-4A2 reduces appropriations, general fund appropriations, by $615,000 in 2019 and $615,000 in 2020 in, actually, the Human Services Department budget, and then transfers those amounts plus an additional $131,000 in 2019 and $132,000 in 2020 to SDCI. And this is related to the movement of tenant outreach services from HSD to SDCI. It also imposes a proviso and adds position authority to basically administer that programming. Statement of Legislative Intent, 33-5A2 requests an SDCI-led research and recommendation project on strategies to support tenants by addressing habitability issues in rental units more quickly. Green Sheet 33-8E1 recommends amendment and passage as amended of Council Bill 119386, which is SDCI's fee ordinance. It also adds authority for three full-time inspectors and appropriates them supporting amounts to pay for those positions, and this is all to expand the vacant building monitoring program.
Chair?
Yes, please, Councilmember Herbl. Yeah, I would just like to inquire as to the question I have about the prime sponsor listed. I was under the impression, I was the prime sponsor for this one since it was changes to the fee ordinance to support the expansion of the vacant building monitoring program.
I believe you are correct.
Thank you.
Well, if we could modify this sheet and going forward to acknowledge that Councilmember Herbl is the prime sponsor of this one.
Just looking forward here, there is another green sheet which would make substantive changes to the vacant building monitoring program. The sponsor for that is listed as the Budget Chair, which is our practice here when there is a piece of legislation that is referred to the Budget Committee, but that is a proposal that originates with Councilmember Herbl.
And I'm absolutely fine with adding her name to that or replacing her name with that.
I see. So you're talking, you're referencing 3311A1?
Correct.
So that is the legislation to make the legislative changes to the monitoring program, whereas the green sheet that we're speaking to now is the legislation related to increasing the fees? And is the reason why that is, has Plus Committee Chair Johnson listed as the prime sponsor because there are other fees that we're amending in this piece of legislation, not only the fees necessary to expand the vacant building monitoring program?
Correct. So that, this green sheet rolls up what was four green sheets in the previous discussion. So it includes the changes to the vacant building monitoring fee. It also increases the hourly rate for the land use hourly rate to bring it up to the full inflationary adjustment, which is a proposal by Councilmember Johnson, as well as amending the way that the maximum fee for preservation projects are applied in, if a new development project opts into the mandatory housing affordability program. So it was, and then it passes the full fee ordinance, so there were four green sheets originally that we rolled up into one.
All right, I understand.
I'm good either way.
So that brings us to Green Sheet 33-9A1, which recommends passage of Council Bill 119387, which is SDCI's rental registration and inspection ordinance fee legislation. Statement of Legislative Intent, 33-10A1 requests a report from SDCI on a regulatory path to allow tiny homes as a long-term housing option. And Green Sheet 33-11A1, as we just heard, recommends passage of a piece of legislation not yet introduced, or at least not introduced as of the time of this green sheet, recommending enhancements to the vacant building monitoring program. Next section is for the Seattle Department of Transportation. Green Sheet 35-1A2 establishes a proviso on SDOT spending on adaptive signal controls. Green Sheet 35-2A2 establishes a proviso on SDOT spending for Ballard Bridge pedestrian and bicycle safety improvements. Statement of Legislative Intent, 35-3A1 requests that SDOT submit a report on new mobility options and emerging uses of the right-of-way. Statement of Legislative Intent, 35-4A1 requests a report on transit speed and reliability improvements and rapid ride implementation. Green Sheet 35-5B1 establishes a proviso on spending for the Downtown Transportation Alliance Partnership. Statement of, let's see, I just lost my place.
Sheet 35-8A.
Thank you. Green Sheet 35-8A2 adds $100,000, or rather, $10,000 to Seattle Department of Transportation budget for the installation of suicide prevention hotline signs. This indicates the 20th Avenue Northeast Bridge, but also there are other locations where these signs would be established. I believe this is not simply for the one bridge. Green Sheet 35-9A2 adds $50,000 appropriation in Seattle Department of Transportation to fund a configuration study for Third Avenue. Green Sheet 35-10A2 adds $500,000 of expenditure authority in 2020 to SDOT for the Neighborhood Park Street Fund, Your Voice, Your Choice CIP project. Green Sheet 35-11A2 appropriates $500,000 also in 2020 for SDOT to support Phase 3 of the Rainier Safety Project in the Vision Zero CIP project. Green Sheet 35-12A2 appropriates $350,000 for a home zone pilot program. Statement of Legislative Intent, 35-13A2 requests a report on the implementation of the Thomas Street Greenway Project. Green Sheet 35-14A2 appropriates $250,000 for urban freight mobility and alley congestion A Statement of Legislative Intent, 35-15A1 requests a report on Interbay Corridor transportation improvements, maintenance needs, and funding. Statement of Legislative Intent, 35-16A1 requests that SDOT and the Office of the Waterfront supply a report on planning and potential use of the Narian Bell Town after the decommissioning of the Battery Street Tunnel. Green Sheet 35-17A2 creates a new 35th Avenue Southwest paving project in the SDOT 2019-2024 Proposed Capital Improvement Program. Statement of Legislative Intent, 35-18A1 establishes the council's intent to review and consider legislative approval of SDOT's proposal for the revised Move Seattle spending plan. Statement of Legislative Intent, 35-19A1 requests performance measures and the identification of construction funding for any Center City streetcar operating agreement. Green Sheet 35-20A1 adds a CIP project page to the SDOT section of the CIP for the Highland Park Roundabout Project and amends the CIP project page for SDOT's Vision Zero project. Green Sheet 35-21A1 provisos spending on streetcar operations. Green Sheet 35-22A1, and I guess I could elaborate slightly, 3521A1 provisos spending on streetcar operations pending delivery of reports on the streetcar system. I believe those are intended to be regular reports rather than a particular sly. Green Sheet 35-22A1 establishes a proviso on spending in support of the construction of the Center City Streetcar Connector. Green Sheet 35-25A1 uses 30, or rather, 3.5 million of Seattle Transportation Benefit District funds and changes funding sources for SDOT's Transit Corridor improvements and arterial major maintenance CIP projects. So this is a reprogramming of some available transportation benefit funds for which the revenue forecast was increased just in October, and that releases some general fund that is available to support other purposes as a result of that reprogramming. Green Sheet 35-30A1 recommends passage of Council Bill 119388, amending the SDOT street use permit fee schedule. Green Sheet 35-31A1 recommends passage of Council Bill 119380 to extend the term of the Interfund loan to the Seattle Streetcar Operations Fund. Green Sheet 35-32A2 recommends passage of Council Bill 119401, which establishes conditions for SDOT's grant applications in 2019. Oh, and that's the end of that.
Yes, please, Councilmember Moskito.
Thank you very much. Just a quick question, if you can help clarify for me. There seems to be three items related to proviso on the streetcar. Can you clarify the difference or how those all interact?
I can indicate that, so there are some reporting requirements related to the streetcar system that already exist, and I believe the proviso under Green Sheet 3521A1 limits the expenditure of funds to continued streetcar operations unless those reports are submitted.
That's great. Calvin Chau with Council Central Staff. So the two different provisos that are here, 3521A1 is, requires SDOT provide you with a 2017 annual report on the existing streetcar operations. They have not provided that report, a report on that since June of 2017. Green Sheet 3522A1 is a proviso on all spending for new construction of the Center City Streetcar, and it requires that council pass a future ordinance to authorize that to happen. It is basically a, make sure that there is a council action in the future if that project were to go forward.
Thank you.
And that Green Sheet 35-31A1, the Interfund loan, is also related to previous operations of the current streetcar system, so that is more in line with 3521A1 as opposed to 3522A1, which-
The legislation, there is an existing streetcar fund loan for the South Lake Union Streetcar that has been on the books since about 2006, and that term of that loan expires at the end of this year, and the executive proposes to pay for that loan with the sale proceeds from, portion of the proceeds from the Mercer Superblock. And so this would extend the term for one year to allow that timing to match up.
Good. Good. Any other questions on that? Thank you.
I don't have a question, but I have a general remark, if I may.
Please.
I just wanted to recognize that Calvin's wearing a red poppy today.
Veterans Day.
Well, it's Remembrance Day, and for those folks who fought in World War I, that is traditionally worn in France and Germany and England, I believe. So I just wanted to recognize that I don't think I've seen a red poppy be worn in these chambers before, and I just wanted to acknowledge that Calvin is doing so, and I think it's an important thing for us to remember.
Nice. Very good. How are you feeling, Calvin, right now?
Sorry, Cal.
Good. All right, well, let's move on to the Fire Department, please.
So the next section is for the Fire Department, and the first item in there is actually for the Fire Department. I would note that this section, my error, includes both the Seattle Fire Department and the Seattle Municipal Court. First, the actual Seattle Fire Department item, Green Sheet 36-2A1, which recommends passage of Council Bill 119389, the 2019 fee ordinance for the Fire Department. Green Sheet 37-2A1 is actually a Seattle Municipal Court green sheet. This reduces funding and re-categorizes the nature of a position in the Court Resource Center and reproduces a certain amount of savings that you can see indicated there. Again, that is in the Seattle Municipal Court. In the Seattle Police Department, Green Sheet 38-1A2 appropriates $37,500 general fund in 2019 to retain the South Park Public Safety Coordinator. Statement of Legislative Intent, 38-2A2 requests that the SPD and Seattle Information Technology submit a report on the database for the Law Enforcement-Assisted Diversion Program, or LEED. Statement of Legislative Intent, 38-3A2 requests that the executive submit a report on special events cost recovery. Green Sheet 38-4A2 appropriates $25,000 in the Seattle Information Technology Department in 2019 to fund a business analyst to support the Law Enforcement-Assisted Diversion Program, again, for a three-month period. Green Sheet 38-5A2 establishes a proviso on spending related to the Community Service Officer Program in the Seattle Police Department. Statement of Legislative Intent, 38-6A2 requests that the Seattle Police Department submit monthly and quarterly reports on their staffing levels. And Green Sheet 38-7B1 reduces general fund appropriations in 2019 by 1.365 million and appropriations in 2020 by 1 million to reflect salary savings related to staffing. In Seattle Public Utilities, Statement of Legislative Intent, 40-1A2 requests that SPU analyze the utility discount program as part of its affordability and accountability strategic plan. Green Sheet 40-2A1 recommends passage of Council Bill 119395, the Drainage and Wastewater System Bond Ordinance. The next two items, Green Sheet 40-3A2 and 40-4A1, also authorize the passage of legislation to issue bonds for the water system and to refund existing bonds for the water system. The last section here is covering budget-related legislation, some of which was marbled throughout in other sections covering other departments, but the remaining legislation here is Green Sheet 41-5A2, which would recommend adoption of Resolution 31853, which provides for enhanced oversight of capital improvement program projects. Green Sheet 41-6A1 recommends passage of Council Bill 119377, which provides for a BNO tax deduction for revenue from grants, contracts, and subawards for life sciences research. This is the, this is re-establishing a deduction which was available for a number of years. Green Sheet 41-7A1 recommends passage of Council Bill 119390, the third 2018 Grand Acceptance Ordinance, and this authorizes departments to accept a total of about 8.3 million of funding from outside sources. Green Sheet 41-8-B-1 recommends the amendment and then passage as amended of Council Bill 119391, which is the third 2018 supplemental appropriations ordinance. This is the third quarter supplemental budget. It revises a number of elements in the current year, 2018 adopted budget. The amendment that would be approved here authorizes basically the recapture of $50,000 in general fund that is an overbudget in a certain area, and that flows through to the proposed 2019-2020 budget. Council Bill, or rather, Green Sheet 419A1 recommends passage of Council Bill 119393, which authorizes the issuance of $55 million of limited tax general obligation bonds in support of the general capital projects for the city. Green Sheet 41-14A1 recommends passage of Resolution 31848, which would adopt revised financial policies for the Cumulative Reserve Subfund. Green Sheet 41-15A- Green Sheet 41-15A1 recommends passage of Council Bill not yet introduced but in our possession, which will amend certain provisions of the business license tax and business license tax certificate fee, commonly known as the business license and BNO tax, to conform with provisions of state law. I would note there are a few other pieces of budget legislation that actually pass the budget, and they're not included here as they are sort of make use of what is provided here in the balancing package rather than being a component of it. And you can see here the net total impact in the, if I scroll up here, it's the 2019 general fund, 2019 other, 2020 general fund, and 2020 other of all of the revenue changes, appropriation cuts, and appropriation increases throughout the entire package.
Great. Thank you. Colleagues, do you have any questions at this point? So Eric, hand that man a glass of water. Well done. Thank you. And we still have public comment. I want to just underscore one more time that any of my colleagues want to make a change in any of this, that we have a Form C that we need to submit to Kirsten and Crowd, and you will create green sheets for us that will be presented next Wednesday. I'm working with Councilmember Juarez on two that we know, and if you'll let us know as soon as you can if there's specifics, so that we've got that no later than noon this coming Friday, and then where there is a three-day weekend. So our next council meeting will be Tuesday. Then we will vote on the package, on, vote on-
No, I'm sorry. You're right.
Council-
The next council meeting will in fact be on Tuesday, and we were about to correct what you did not do, which is to say that there would be a committee meeting on Tuesday, so.
And then a budget meeting will be on Wednesday. And just for all of those of you who are just very excited about yet another vote, it will be on Monday, approximately 10 days from now. That will be our final vote on our budget. Councilmembers want?
Thank you. Just wanted to share with the public something that you and I and Director Aristide talked about yesterday, which is one of the green sheets that was not included in the proposed balancing package was funding for attorneys to help renters who are facing eviction notices. And this is something that other states have seen to be extremely effective, when you have a lawyer with you who knows what they're doing, it is actually, it often works in your favor, and eviction notices that are sent out for very flimsy reasons like not having $50, being $50 short of your full rent can be easily prevented. And my original green sheet was to fund multiple attorneys to be funded, but what Chair Bachchan and I have discussed yesterday is if we can work with Council Central Staff, specifically Ali Pinochi, to figure out if we can fund at least one of them, and Director Aristide is, I was just asking about that earlier.
Thank you. And Councilmember Swan, thank you so much for working with me on this. I will also see what we can do about finding one, funding, enough funding for at least one other attorney. I know, as you say, that it can be very effective for people who are struggling to pay their rent, and the last thing we want to do is evict people because we know nothing good happens from that. So let's see what we can do. I will work with you on that. So anything else about Form C or green sheets, noon on Wednesday, I mean, noon on Friday for a vote on next Wednesday? And it's an up or down vote on our green sheets. Do I have anything else?
Just a point of personal privilege, when you get the chance. Thank you for that. Looking forward to working with you on the possible two that we're considering, and appreciate the Central Staff's intense effort to try to find every penny possible. I just want to take a note of personal privilege to say Happy the Wali as well to all of our friends who are celebrating this new moon holiday from India, and we know that it's a big celebration, one of the biggest festivals in India. So to my staff and anybody celebrating, Happy the Wali.
Thank you. Okay. So we're going to move into public comment. We've got three people assigned, or actually two individuals in one group. So Brady, and then there is a group that I'm going to ask you to come together and introduce yourselves, and then Allison Isinger is here, too. Good. So welcome, and we'll have two minutes for you, so please.
Great. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes. And you know what? You may be happier with the other one, it's a little taller. You can bend it to you, but then you can stand up straight and feel good.
Yeah. Awesome. Thank you. Well, thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak today. My name's Brady Begin, and I'm the Philanthropy and Program Assistant at Historic Seattle. So I'm speaking to the Historic Preservation Seed Funding, that's Green Sheet 93C1. In my broad bowl, I see firsthand how much impact historic preservation can have on our community, particularly through nonprofits. The eight buildings that we operate, that we own and operate, I should say, currently serve 225,000 people every year, and that includes the work of 25 nonprofit organizations. And these groups might not be able to carry out their important work were it not for the affordable office and rental spaces at our properties such as Washington Hall or the Good Shepherd Center. Without them, kids in the central area or seniors in Wallingford, to name a few, would have maybe nowhere else to go. And that's the real impact of preservation. Saving historic buildings is about more than just architecture. It's about people, and it's about communities. As you've heard many times, I'm sure, over the past few weeks, we can't do more and we must do more, especially in neighborhoods that Historic Seattle does not yet serve, but we can't do it alone, which is why I'm here today. We've been talking about $500,000 in seed funding, which has been reduced in this balancing package to $250,000. In today's real estate market, that might not go very far, but as always, will be scrappy, and we will do as much as we can. But I'm here today to ask you to not just vote yes on funding for historic preservation, but to also consider restoring that amount to $500,000. $500,000 of cash in hand could have helped us save Beacon Hill's Garden House for continued nonprofit use, and with less, we would have found ourselves in the same position, rejected offer that couldn't compete with all cash and a displaced longtime neighborhood arts group now in need of a new home. So please consider what this is really about, which is people, and do as much as you possibly can to help us save more meaningful places that foster lively communities. Thank you again for your time and consideration.
Good.
Brady, I just want to thank you for your advocacy. I hear you loudly and clearly, I think our colleagues do, and so we're trying to do the best we could, but I appreciate your consistent and strong advocacy. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Brady, could I ask you, after we conclude on public comment today, could you wait for me? I want to talk with you on some other issues that are very relevant.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Of course. Thank you again.
Good. All right. Julia, Puget Sound Sage, and I think you've got a group. And would you introduce everybody, please?
Yeah. So my name is Julia Paschuta. I'm a Policy and Research Analyst with Puget Sound Sage.
Good.
Tony Tohmsay.
KY King Garrett, Africa Town.
Great. Thank you.
And together with our coalition partners, are thrilled to see the $1 million restored to the Equitable Development Initiative for the 2019 and 2020 budget. The EDI is the cities and community solution to mitigating displacement that is exacerbated by the rapid growth of our city. And together, the coalition that helped to create the EDI, staff at OPCD, and the growing list of groups funded through EDI are building sustainable structures to prevent the displacement of residents, cultural institutions, and community businesses due to rising costs pushing folks out of our city. So far, we have funded over $7 million in projects, such as the Chief Seattle Club's Affordable Housing Project in Pioneer Square, Midtown Commons in the Central District, site acquisition for affordable culturally relevant preschool at the Refugee and Immigrant Family Center. And again, we're thrilled to see the $5 million restored to the EDI. These are critical resources that historically redlined and under-invested in communities desperately need to secure land and build projects to stop displacement. We further support Councilmember O'Brien's effort to restrict the short-term rental revenue moving forward, so we don't find ourselves in this situation again.
Great. Thank you.
Yes. On behalf of the Raising Social Equity Task Force, which was mentioned, we do thank the council for keeping the resources there and all those council members that are working hard on the issue of affordable housing and affordable rental. I think it's very important that we accelerate the process that was interrupted with the head tax situation, and where the corporation said this is not the right solution, but we do want to have a solution, and we need that solution to come forward fast because these resources that we are granting towards equitable development is not at the level and scale of the problem, and so we need those who said they support the problem, solving the problem, and have significant resources, both in the intellectual capital as well as financial capital, to step forward and invest in that process. And so we would like to see the next steps of that. We heard not this right now, but we do need a right now, and so we need to get to that this, what that alternative is, fast. Thank you.
Just want to add, thank councilmembers supporting EDI over the years. Two things, the funds actually bring groups, community-based organizations, to the table that historically were not included at a lot of tables. That's really important for the capacity part. The second thing, the capital part, is actually leverages 20-plus times more on the projects, so it's a very good investment and use for city funds. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Tony. Thank you all. Appreciate it. Allison, you're up.
Good timing.
Thank you, councilmembers. My name is Allison Isinger with the Seattle King County Coalition on Homelessness. I want to thank you, Councilmember Mosqueta, for your point of personal privilege about the holiday of Diwali, and I want to ask for just a moment to reflect upon the extraordinary turnout that our citizenry produced, including those who are not citizens helping to produce that turnout. That is a wonderful thing to experience. I want to talk with you a little bit about the good and the bad. I really deeply appreciate the way in which every single council member has done what we asked, which is to say, under no circumstances will we see a reduction in core basic shelter. I thank you from the bottom of my heart, on behalf of the coalition, our members, and the people who are outside. I know that that is a significant piece of what is added into the budget, but I want to flag for you that in sending you a budget that looked that way, what the mayor did was she required you to add that money, and you are required to look for that money in her budget. Right now, when I hear the conversation about largely very good additional investments, what I hear is that as a whole, this council is not looking to create a budget that sustains the historical current investments in serving people who are homeless in this city and providing human services without maintaining wages and without maintaining the cost of doing business for the organizations that are nonprofits in this community in the same way that the city has to address those increasing costs of doing business for itself and its own workers. You are setting us all up. You are setting up people who are homeless, you are setting up the hard-working staff, you are setting up the EDs. And in no way do I mean to suggest that you are doing this out of hardness of heart or lack of goodwill. I know you each better than that, but what I am asking you to do is to look at sustaining our current investments. If we are going to talk honestly about efficiency and about accountability, what is efficient is adequately funding and maintaining core services. So I look forward to speaking with each of you. I know the budget process is very difficult. These are not easy, simple fixes, but I urge you to work with Councilmember Mosqueta to address this.
Thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
Okay. Does anybody else want to speak? All right. Well, then, this particular session is ended. Thank you very much. We will adjourn today and then be back together next Tuesday.